All right, I'd like to call this meeting of the Lakeville Planning Board to order. It is Thursday, April 28th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. We are in the Lakeville Public Library Gallery Room. I guess I don't have to read anything crazy now, we're in person. So, the first item on our agenda is a public hearing to amend the zoning bylaw, Section 6.7, Site Plan Review by deleting the existing section and replacing it with a new section, 6.7. This public hearing has been rescheduled to May 12th, 2022 at 7:05. That will be held at the police station meeting room? Moving on, the next item on our agenda, a public hearing to amend the zoning bylaw, Section 2.0 definitions by adding additional definitions related to signs and deleting the existing Section 6.6 sign regulations and replacing it with a new Section 6.6 sign regulations and so on. This public hearing has also been rescheduled to May 12th, 2022 at 7:15. Next item on our agenda is a public hearing to amend the zoning bylaw by adding a new section, 7.10, Open Space Residential Development, which would allow by special permit with approval of subdivision plan and so on. This public hearing has been rescheduled to May 12th, 2022 at 7:25 PM. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing to amend the zoning bylaw, Section 7.4.6, Specific Use by Special Permit Auto or Boat Sales Rental Service Landing Industrial District, Replacing with Business District. This public hearing has been rescheduled also to May 12th, 2022 at 7:35 PM. So, the next item on our agenda is a site plan review for 2 Bedford Street. At the applicant's request, they would like us to continue this hearing. So, I would entertain a motion to continue the 2 Bedford Street Site Plan Review until May 12th?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item on our agenda is Site Plan Review of 156 Rhode Island Road. Is anybody here representing the applicant? So...
They do know we moved the...
Location?
Location in and what stop at the police station and we put a sign up indicating that the hearings are rescheduled and remainder of the meeting.
Okay. So, at this time, I guess I'm gonna jump forward just to give them a chance if they do make it in a few minutes late. The Planning Board has a review of a zoning order of appeals petition for 29 Pilgrim Road. Has anybody looked at this one?
Yes.
It looks like an addition.
Addition in a small lot, typically residential things we don't comment. Would anybody like to make a motion? A motion to make no comment to the zoning board of appeals?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Planning Board will make a no comment to 29 Pilgrim Road to the zoning board of appeals. We have to approve minutes of meeting from March 24th, 2022. I believe Nora, you weren't on the board at that point?
That's correct.
I believe everybody else here was present at that meeting. Did everybody get a chance to review those minutes?
Yeah, did.
Yes.
Did anybody like to, or would anybody like to make any changes or amendments to those or is that...
They look good.
Yep, they were fine.
So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of meeting for Thursday, March 24th, 2022.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor? Nora?
Abstain.
Jack?
Aye.
Aye.
So I have, motion carries with a majority. The next item on the agenda is to approve the minutes for the Planning Board's April 14th, 2022 meeting.
I move to approve minutes of the April 14th meeting.
I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I wasn't down. I wasn't.
You weren't down, Peter?
Yeah, I was abstaining.
So you abstained? So motion carries with a majority, those minutes are approved as well. What now?
We can wait a few minutes for, I can see if I have the cell phone number, wanted to call Bob Reno.
If you don't, I probably do, but yeah, give him a call.
I'm not sure.
Go right ahead.
I'm not sure why the app can have to be here.
I think just to represent themselves. I would entertain that we would take a public comment on this, we are not going to take action on it tonight anyway.
I would entertain it. I would like to share that he's in the parking lot. So, he's sitting in his truck.
He's in the parking lot?
I think so.
It appeared that he is sitting in his truck.
Okay.
The owner's Bob Reno.
The owner.
Oh, so he's probably for the engineer.
So I move to take a brief recess?
Second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting will be in recess until further notice. I'd like to call the meeting back to order. Next item on our agenda is to discuss site plan review for 156 Rhode Island Road. T Sikorski Realty LLC is the applicant. We have a podium and a microphone, if you could step up to that to speak and identify yourself as...
My name's Bob Reno, I'm with Riverhawken by the way. Again, sorry for the mic broken. I'm Bob Reno, I represent Adam Sikorski.
For the project. And I'm used to Zoom meetings now, so I forgot my easel out in the car, so I'm not sure what a good vantage point is.
Can I put it here on this picture?
Is that a good location for that board?
Here, I'll hold them up here and you can point, I know what they look like. Be on TV though.
Okay. So we're here tonight for, for site plan review for property at the location of Rhode Island Road and, excuse me, Rhode Island Road and Crooked Lane. There's an existing building on the site, there's a gravel parking lot which surrounds the building and has, currently has three curb cuts, I'm sorry, four curb cuts off of, is that right? Yeah, four curb cuts, two off...
Three. It was three.
Three, three curb cuts, okay, sorry. So three curb cuts, two of which are off Rhode Island Road and one off Crooked Lane and more at the intersection of Rhode Island Road and Crooked Lane, which, just to get a better idea of existing conditions, I'll let Mark hold this up. But basically, there's a curb cut here on the northerly part of the site, off Rhode Island, a large curb cut off Rhode Island Road and then one right at the intersection on Crooked Lane.
I believe that was blocked off because when you went through the zoning board of appeals, we had recommended that that would be blocked off, so you did that?
Yeah, it's blocked off, yep, but, but, so as part of this, the new proposal, we are proposing to, I'm sorry?
Another opening right at the solar site, I don't know what you call that, but I would call it curb cut. Down over here, there's a building to access.
Well, the whole thing's open.
Yeah, the whole thing's open. So I guess, and then there's, there's currently access off, another, another access off Crooked Lane. So what we're proposing is to, to close up, I guess, if you count the one on, on Crooked Lane, we'll be closing up two existing plus more formally closing the one with the landscape area and adding landscape right at the intersection of Crooked Lane and Rhode Island Road. We're proposing a, a second building, which is, which is larger than the first, which will have garage bays, you know, along both sides of the building and an access drive that, that extends around the building from two curb cuts off Crooked Lane. Those curb cuts will be 24 feet wide and have 15-foot curb radius to kind of keep, keep the curb cuts a little tighter, so people will kind of have a better idea of where to access and exit the property. As part of it, we're proposing, you know, extensive landscape as well around the perimeter of the project in between the curb cuts to, to, again, just kind of buffer from the surrounding roadways. The site will be served by an onsite septic system, which we've done perk tests with the Board of Health and as part of the submitted permit, we've submitted plans which show the proposed septic system, which will be on the southeastern portion of the property. There'll be parking provided for, that meets the intended use, I believe we're providing for 22 total spaces on the site. And we'll collect all the storm water from the existing property, which there's currently no formal storm water controls, and we'll collect that water up through a series of swales and, and a few catch basins, and that'll be passed through a series of infiltration basins. And a lot of the water will be infiltrated in the ground and only for very big, large storms will any water be discharged offsite. Currently, the, the storm water from Crooked Lane and a portion of Rhode Island Road, or a portion of Crooked Lane and a portion of Rhode Island Road drained down to the, and I'll have to go over here. Drained down with existing catch basin that's along, it's on a paved swale that comes off of Crooked Lane on Tyler's property that is an infiltration basin or a leaching catch basin. So that's the only storm water control and it's really just for street runoff, it doesn't, it doesn't collect any water from Tyler's site. And in terms of other things, I guess, for the site plan review thing, we're proposing tight tanks for, the floor drains within the building will have overhead doors, so part of the plumbing code, they'll have to have floor drains, and the floor drains will be connected to a double-walled storage tank for any industrial wastewater that, that does get generated, which will be minimal, it's just kind of part of the plumbing code to meet that condition. Again, the septic will be handled on-site, the water, we're proposing a connection to the City of Taunton Water Line that exists in Rhode Island Road, there'll be a fire suppression line, which will be a six-inch line and then a two-inch domestic line for, for the, to service the building. The building will have minimal septic flow, but there will be bathrooms inside the building and again discharge the onsite septic. Lighting for the project will be minimal, there's some existing street lighting that exists at the perimeter of the site on the roadway and those are, are maintained by Taunton Municipal Light and Power. The, the only lighting that we're proposing in addition to that is just wall packs that will exist along the facade of the building on the, I guess, the northerly and southerly sides of the building. And those, those lights will be fully compliant with the, the Lakeville Outdoor Lighting Bylaw, there'll be less than 900 lumens and they'll be mounted at a low height, you know, probably no more than 12 feet. And they'll, you know, again, fully comply with that Lakeville Lighting Bylaw. And again, the storm water management, we've designed it such that it, it complies with the Mass DEP Storm Water Management Standards and I'm sure we'll have an opportunity to submit it for an outside consultant for review and hopefully we'll get them to concur that, that that's all been done. Erosion during construction and after construction, we've submitted as part of the Storm Water Management Standards, we've submitted a erosion control plan for construction period and we've also submitted a long-term operation and maintenance plan for the storm water controls. The, during construction also, this site will be disturbing more than an acre, so we'll be, we'll be submitting a permit and for NPDS permit with the USCPA for, during the construction, for coverage under the Construction General Permit, excuse me. And then, and that's pretty much about it, I guess.
All right, so just for the record, while we're going through the process here, we did receive a letter, a comment letter from the Board of Health, from Edward Cullen, his note says, "Dear Chairman Knox, we received a copy of the site plan for," does he have the, 156 Rhode Island Road, "the plan from Riverhawken Environmental dated 3/10/22 shows a proposed industrial building and an area for a subsurface sewage disposal system. The applicant has performed percolation tests and the area is sufficient to support a sewage disposal system and it is possible to connect to the municipal water supply. There is no need for a well," which you mentioned, Bob. "Therefore, based on the information provided to the Board of Health, there is no reason for the Board of Health to recommend denial due to public health issues at this time." Conservation Commission had no concerns, Fire Department had some concerns about their hookup on the building just to be located, they want to see that and some other stuff. Did you see that comment letter?
I did not, no, I haven't seen it.
I'll, I'll make sure you get a copy of that. And I know Mark, the town planner, had given you a, a list of things and I know you're working through them.
Correct.
We're still gonna see some of that stuff?
Yes, yes.
So, in essence, tonight, we're not gonna conclude anything, we're gonna need to continue and...
That's correct.
Do you think you'll have all that information for our May 12th meeting or would it be after that?
No, it can be May 12th, we can meet that, no problem. Yep, yep, we're, we're close and probably have a couple of questions, we just want to make sure we get any input from the Planning Board and, and so we can address everything all at once with one revision set as opposed to, you know, coming to multiple times.
Okay, great. I guess I have a couple of questions myself. Is it clear on the plan what you're proposing to be pavement? I know a lot of it's gravel currently.
Yeah, currently, and that's one of the things and questions for the board, and I, I know that the zoning bylaw does make mention about bituminous concrete in terms of parking areas. Currently, we're proposing a gravel or reprocessed asphalt. The existing lot that is comprised of, of reprocessed asphalt that, when compacted, is very close to the performance of pavement, but, but not quite, of course. So we are, we're, that, that's one of the, the questions, I guess, for the Planning Board is whether we could get a waiver from that requirement to have bituminous concrete and go with the reprocessed asphalt.
And you're aware of the, the lot coverage requirements?
Yes, yep. And in terms of lot coverage, we, we do exceed the 50%, so we would be looking for the benefit of 10, I guess, 20% total under the, I'm not sure which section of the bylaw, but does allow for if we meet certain building design standards and site design standards.
Yeah.
There's 10% for building design and then 10% for site design standards, it's afforded to the applicant. So that is our intention to meet those building design standards and we've gone through those and...
And do you think you'll have a building plan, like elevations for us to look at? We don't care about the inside of the building as much as the outside.
Yes. Tyler himself is gonna prepare the plans and, and I think maybe even has a draft that we could share with you tonight of, of what it might look like.
I have two other questions. The, you have an existing structure and I, I would like you to go to the mic just for, that's for recording purposes for Lakeham. What's your intent with the existing structure?
To use it for, for our storage.
Because I know that's something in our bylaw, accessory structures. It may exceed the size of it, the allowed, I think 1,500 square feet's the accessory, accessory structure size, however, it's pre-existing, so probably have to talk to the Building Commissioner about that. But my understanding is it's got to be an accessory use of the main, so it wouldn't be an additional tenant space.
No.
And then currently, you've got a lot of trucks over there.
Hmm.
Bob, you had referenced that there were 20 parking spaces with this new expansion or improvement to the property. What's gonna happen with the trucks?
They'll, they'll be in the building.
They'll all fit inside?
Yeah.
Okay. Do any other board members have any questions? Peter?
I'd like to see where the 20 parking spaces are, if you don't mind. I don't, I don't see them, but maybe I'm not seeing it properly.
I think they have a...
Yeah.
Probably haven't seen it.
One of these get out. Yeah, so, I'd like to show you directly, it's kind of like, there's...
And to be clear, you're looking at passenger vehicle parking spaces, not track trailer because they'll be all inside?
Correct, yep, yep. Yeah, and I, I misspoke because I was, was not the player and I'm working on so many site plans that I confuse myself, but it's, it's 14 spaces provided and they're shown, there's a parking area over, over here on the western portion of the site, parking along the, the face of the building along this way.
So, just so, we'll cut to the chase, this is gonna be 11 businesses? Is that, is that accurate?
So, yeah, 11, yeah.
11 businesses?
Yeah, it might change to 10, but, yeah. I plan on removing one of those, one of those bays, extending the backside one and making the other side my regular mechanical room.
Okay.
So my fire access will be in the center of the building, the front.
It's not a lot of parking.
We could certainly increase the parking, it's just we're trying to comply with the, the zoning bylaw and we really don't think that there'll be a lot of parking needed for the site.
Right.
You know, these are gonna be like contractor type bays, a lot of storage.
So, I mean, without seeing an elevation, the ones that are out front, that, that parking space, it doesn't, it doesn't obstruct the door, it's to the side of each door?
No, to the side of the door, there's a man door and a park.
And, and there's two, there's two bays that have a handicap and the, and the van accessible area that don't have any parking near them, is, is that safe? They would have to travel to the other side of the building if they had a car or something?
That's correct, but certainly we could add spaces to, if, if, you know, if the planning board thinks they're required, then certainly we could add some additional spaces, there is, there is land area for it.
My concern is if you've got, would you say 10 different companies in there coming in there?
Potentially.
Is that, is 14 spaces, will that accommodate the employees and/or customers that would be coming to the facility? It's, so it's not, I'm not intending to have customers coming to those businesses, I'm looking more so for like a contractor bay where they keep their, you know, HVAC supplies or plumbing stuff there and that's, I'm not looking to have like retail business there.
Okay.
So I, I don't, I don't, it's not really planned to have people showing up and looking for spots to park.
Peter, do you have anything else?
Um, no, not at this time, I guess.
Okay. Jack, did you have anything else?
No, thank you.
Michelle?
Um, no, I don't have anything.
I'll have more when I see this at the building site.
Mark, I see.
Yeah, two questions. First, one, one comment is on my, my comment letter, I talked about the zoning district line running through the site. I have, just for clarification for everybody, I have pulled the articles at town meeting that created the zoning district, created that an industrial district and it is much closer to the line that you have shown on there, because it's, it's measured as, as far as a distance, so...
A distance.
So, you know, so the line you have is, is sufficient for this purpose. And then the other question I have is these contractor bays, so I've reviewed a couple similar type buildings, I told you, and, and one in particular was more of like the mini storage, except they were bigger with roll-up doors and, and really it was just storage for the contractors, sometimes they leave their trucks there and that kind of stuff. Another one was a little bit larger units where they could pull their vans in and trucks store stuff, but there was also room, they also had office space and bathrooms in each bay. So, my question is, because, and, you know, and because of that, they also had to have a regular man door to walk in and, and so my question is, what's, since we don't have floor plans yet, because I would like a basic floor layout for this, which are you planning on doing in, in these buildings? Because it will matter as far as the use goes. So, as far as that goes, each building, each bay will have its, a pedestrian door next to an overhead door and there'll be no offices. No offices? No, it'll be like a, just a bathroom with a sink, a toilet and a slop sink on the outside.
Okay. Nora, do you have anything?
I'm good.
All right, so at this time, if there's no other questions from the Planning Board, I'd open up for a public comment. If you could step up to the mic, please.
Hi, my name is Kako Oral, 120 Crooked Lane. At the Selectman's meeting on Monday night, it was brought up that there was a cease and desist for this property at 156 Rhode Island Road. I'm wondering if anyone can speak to whether or not that is in place and it, it hasn't been followed, if, if it, if it is in place.
I believe I can and I'm gonna refer to Mr. Sikorski as well, that I spoke to the zoning enforcement officer today and there isn't one. To my knowledge, wasn't one, has not been given to the owner.
It was my understanding that there was a cease and desist that was verbally communicated to the zoning enforcement officer, that he was supposed to talk with 156 Rhode Island Road approximately two years ago and issue a cease and desist.
I'm not aware of that.
Who issued that?
So, Selectman La Camera is the one who noted it as far as the, the meeting on Monday night and I...
Were there any grounds? Are there any grounds for this cease and desist? I guess I wanna, no, that really, we're getting off the rails here because that has nothing to do with site plan review.
That's fine, that's fine. I was just asking about the current business that's operating because the current business owner is here and if there is a cease and desist that is supposed to be in place, then I don't understand why we would be extending, trying to have an expansion. The, the next point is that they're currently operating without being registered, T Sikorski Enterprises is not registered with the Town of Lakeville and I requested information from Clerk Lillian Drain and she indicated that there's no businesses... information from Clerk Lillian Drain, and she indicated that there's no businesses, no business permits associated with the address at the property. I'm wondering if the trucks that have been running in and out of that property are registered in the town of Lakeville? Have they been, are they registered in the town of Lakeville?
So, I'd like him to be able to step to the mic to answer questions. I don't know if you want to go through all of your questions?
Yeah, go ahead, okay.
And then...
So, two years ago, Tyler came before the town and said that he was going to be doing a landscaping business, and that was the proposed use that he was indicating. That has been expanded without permission from the town to include heavy construction, plumbing, car hauling, tree removal. His website indicates that the hours of operation are 24/7, and I'm wondering why the business is operating currently without a bathroom in violation of town bylaws. Those are my questions. Thank you.
If you could step up, go through those. So, I jotted down three of them, and I, forgive me if I missed one. A business permit. You have something registered within the town, or?
I, until I was made aware of the select meeting this morning that happened on Tuesday, I didn't know I needed one, so I filed one today with the town.
Okay. Where are your vehicles registered?
They were in town, they are now in Lakeville.
And you were issued, I'm sorry, the zoning on that property is zoned industrial, and you went for a special permit through the zoning board of appeals to sell retail landscaping. I didn't pull the minutes for that. I don't, I couldn't speak to it directly, and I'm sure there's a record of it, but at that time, what did you present? What was your current use prior to asking for the retail use? Were you operating other businesses or your current business without, because my understanding is the retail thing is just to sell landscape supplies?
Yeah, it was just to, so I was, I could sell landscape supplies wholesale, which falls under industrial, but I needed a special permit to be able to sell retail, as in if homeowners want to come and buy mulch directly from me.
So, you already intended or were selling industrial or wholesale?
Yeah, yeah.
So, the special permit you got wasn't to preclude you from your industrial use, it was to add you?
It was to add the retail use, yes, for retail sale.
Mark, do you have any comment on this, or?
Nope.
Okay. Does that answer your questions, or did you want to?
No, how many businesses have you been operating at the site?
It's my business. It's the same business.
So, the plumbing?
Oh, that's, so that's somebody I rent out the one side of the building to, yeah.
And what about the car haul?
He's not there. He's been gone since last August.
And the tree removal?
He's still there, yes.
So, that's another business. That's not your business.
That's not my business, no.
My understanding is those are all allowed uses, and there are no regulations that say you can't have multiple businesses on a single site. Evidence would be every plaza in town. I talked to the zoning enforcement official about that, and that was the example I said is, what's the difference between that and, say, Birchwood Plaza or Savis Plaza?
Mr. Kim, so my concern is that when he came before the town, he indicated he was going to be doing landscaping and selling landscaping materials. We've just heard him say that, oh, there's also a plumber, a plumbing person. Oh, and there was also a car hauler, car hauler. Oh, he's not there anymore, but he was there, and also that he's doing these other businesses. That was not brought before the town. And that's my concern, because he's, they're wanting to do this business, but I don't know if that's actually what he's intending to do, because he has shown that he is not doing what he did, what he said he was going to do. So, that's all my comments.
Okay, thank you.
Two more questions. The bathroom?
Oh, yeah, the bathrooms. Tell me, could you explain about the bathrooms and how you're operating without a bathroom?
I don't have a bathroom, and I saw the select meeting the other day, and I called for, I've been working on the bathroom, working on the, the correct has, we have a separate coming, but I called today to get a portable restroom brought there, it'll be there Monday from noon in, but I don't have one right now, no. But we don't, I'm, like, it's not, I don't know.
You see the property as a storage and warehouse? Does anyone use it?
Except for the plumbers.
They're not there. They come in in the morning, they drop their vehicles off, and they get in the vans and leave for the entire day.
Okay, so it appears that with this site plan review and the improvement you've presented, that those things will be rectified.
Yes.
My understanding is there was a written complaint filed that the zoning enforcement official has 14 days to act on, so we're going to let that play out, and I would assume by the next meeting, we'll hear anything from that. I'm sure you'll be the first to know. So, we'll look forward to hearing from you guys at our May, sorry, 12th?
12th.
Meeting. We'll put you on the agenda for that, if you're good with that, and hopefully, you know, we'll have some answers about these things at that time. Any other comments from the audience?
Just my concern was the flooding. Oh, sorry.
Andrew Murray, 132 Crooked Lane. Three items, I don't know how they get addressed, because I don't know how this works, but noise, dirt, and light. Do we get plans of those, and then we get reviewed, or? Like I said, I plead ignorance, I don't know if that's already counted for, but I don't know how that's done.
So, light is being addressed within, it's in the town's bylaw.
Okay.
And they are, they have acknowledged that within their plan, and they may provide a lighting plan, but everything they do will need to comply to the town's lighting bylaw. Noise, I guess, are you talking about during construction or permanent, ongoing? And I guess we'd like to hear your concerns. We'll certainly address that during the site plan review process.
Both. I, you know, it seemed loud to me. I haven't gone to the point of asking someone to come up with the meters and check it, and it seems, if I read the stuff right, I thought it was supposed to stop around 7:00, but it doesn't seem to, but it could be, I misread that too, so.
So, that's hours of operation. We can certainly address that within this process, and just to talk about it. And you said dirt?
Yeah, so because of the trucking and stuff, the street and stuff, so I don't know, again, I assume that would change, presumably go up, if you're going to have more business and trucks going in and out, so I don't know if there's, how that gets addressed normally.
Yeah, so those things will sort of all be addressed during the site plan review process. I guess, I'll, do you want to comment on any of this, Mark? I know the drainage was a question this gentleman had, that I know you went out the other day and looked at, but I don't want to talk about that yet.
Yeah.
We can certainly condition during the construction process for dust mitigation of water truck or something. Ongoing, I guess some of that's going to be what the parking is going to be, whether it's dense-grade gravel or pavement would help to mitigate some of that. So, those things are all stuff that we'll talk about at the next meeting, and if there needs to be another one after that.
Okay, and so, just so I understand, so they give you the material that talks about that at the next meeting, and then how much time do we as citizens get to review that before, to come and bring you comments, if we don't agree or we have a clarifying question?
Well, I mean, it kind of depends on the level of detail that they bring in to us, and how quickly also our engineers can review the drainage calculations and stuff. I hadn't sent them to the engineers yet, because I was waiting to see if there was any issues related to modifying the plans based on the comments, because if there were significant and they needed to move or break up the building into multiples or change things, then it could affect all the drainage calculations that they did submit. So, again, I mean, I think they kind of went through most of the actual site design issues, which won't change dramatically unless, you know, the drainage doesn't meet the standards.
So, what you just said, when you said won't change dramatically, you mean the plan that they presented tonight won't change dramatically, however, the site, from what it is today, will change dramatically to be what they propose?
That's correct, because once this is developed, the screening operation will probably not, will not be able to fit on that site. It'll, all those piles of dirt will be gone. You'll really have the old building, some parking for some of the trucks and users, and then the landscape materials, and what's shown on this plan is about all he realistically be able to fit on the site.
One thing I'd like to ask, and again, I plead ignorance on this, but is, and I don't know under what scenario it was done, but a lot of trees removed from that site over the years, and so I assume, from my limited understanding of sound and stuff, is that that's made the sound travel even more. So, if during this, something that'd be added is, put something back to help mitigate that. I don't know how big the lot is, you know, I don't know how much the building, I'm drawing enough detail to see, but I'm not sure how else to address the sound issue without...
I think it's going to be, he's going to have limited, he'll have areas for landscaping and plantings, but I think there's limited areas for any significant trees to be planted because of the basins and the drainage, the way it's shaped, but...
Andy, is that your last comment or concern? If I could, then, Bob, could I get you to go back up and pass the plan off, the current site plan, to Mark? And I just want to then talk about, you know, the eastern, eastern or southeastern property line of that touches the solar?
Yes.
Array. Would it be possible on that very southern corner, that would be the closest to Mr. Murray's house, to just put some more of like, it looks like you'd get shrubs on the corner of Rhode Island Road and Crooked Lane, but to do something over there, just to give a little bit of visual screening? I know it's across the road, but it is...
Yeah, absolutely. In terms of visual screening, we could also put some type of fence, which might help, you know, it's a solid fence.
Yeah.
It would help with sound transmission, so better than vegetation. Put some vegetation in front of it or behind it that makes it look good as well.
Would any of the planning board members comment further on that, or is that a reasonable request?
Yeah, thanks.
All right. Thank you, Bob.
Yeah, no problem.
There was a planting, yeah.
All right, so, sir, you had a...
I'm Robert Gulick. I live on 140 Crooked Lane, directly across the street from Tyler's operation, and I'm concerned about the water, the dust, and the noise. And then what are the hours of operation? 7 to 7? Or is it 24/7? Because it's a residential neighborhood.
All right, so that's my concern. Okay, so...
And then also the entrance. That road, you can't even get two vehicles behind there, never mind dump trails, or heavy trucks. Why can't you put the entrances here and here and block all this off? And it'll keep the noise down and the traffic and the dirt and the dust.
It's currently not.
I can't even open the windows of my house the past two years, there's so much dust. I got nothing against him doing what he has to do, I just don't want him to affect me, that's all.
Bob, do you like to speak to that?
For 18 years, I've never had water, and I've never had...
I guess it's, I mean, we can certainly look at that.
You know, when you swing a dump trailer out, right, out of here?
Goes into a tree line.
You go right into the oncoming traffic and they come flying. This is known as the eighth mile drag, this section of road. Everybody knows it. So, when they come around the corner, I hear them every night, all day, flying around the corner. So, my concern is when you're swinging a dump trailer out and you're in the other lane and somebody comes around, what's going to happen? If you put it out here, there shouldn't be any problems. That's all. That's my concern.
Yeah, I guess that'll take some evaluation to figure out. It's a fairly significant site change, but we will look at it.
Okay.
Thank you.
In the back?
My name is Linda Dufrain. My husband, Michael. We live at 149 Rhode Island Road, and I'd like to ask a question. I'd like to know how many big trucks that you have going into your facility, your area, on one given day?
I mean, they're my trucks. I don't really know how many times a day. Most of the time, they're gone all day. They leave in the morning, they come back at night, but sometimes I'm going to know of removing my materials.
How many trucks do you have?
Six, yeah?
Six. So, the minimum 12 trips?
Yeah, six out of six, I mean, if they're all working.
And if you have, if you have, do they make multiple runs?
It depends if I'm bringing stuff in. I mean, but most, yeah, they do sometimes, yeah, not every day, not every week, not sometimes.
What's the busiest day you could have? 20 to 30 trips?
Yeah, I think that sounds...
Okay. Bob, is that something traffic-wise, we can evaluate? Hang on, I'm just going to ask the engineer a question, and then we'll come right back to you.
Thank you.
Try and evaluate something with the traffic and some of those, the trips generated by the trucks, and come back to us with that.
Yeah, I mean, we can at least have statistics that show, you know, what the max day would be, what the average day would be, what a typical, like, international traffic engineer's number for that type of use would be, for the, you know, because it's going to be Tyler's use, but also some additional use, so...
I think that would be good, if you could do that. Ma'am?
Thank you. So, with this new addition, I'd like to also know what you anticipate as far as an increase on those vehicles that are traveling directly, not just in front of my house, but the entire road, Route 79, Crooked Lane. And I actually had three pieces of concrete when I went out in my yard today to do some yard work. That road is in deplorable condition, and most of it is caused by those big 18-wheeler trucks that are passing by, and believe me, they don't go slow. If there's a child out on that road in or on the front yard, and they have a piece of asphalt that is being kicked up by a lot of those big vehicles, that is a very serious situation. And I know that it doesn't happen just by that business alone, but with the increase of what's going to happen, it just adds to a very frustrating and very dangerous situation. So, that is my concern, and I appreciate you listening to me.
Thank you. Did you have?
Yeah.
Normanor, 120 Crooked Lane. Let me just first start. I think part of the problem we're having in looking at the future use is actually nailing down the current use, which is the T. Sikorski Enterprises that currently exists there, among others. So, there have been problems with flooding. Twice, the property flooded. Why is that? It's because the existing conditions were changed. None of that came before the town. The old railroad that was there was filled in, which meant all the water from the site went to one single infiltration basin, which then was overwhelmed and twice flooded. Now, my understanding is that a ditch was dug, not designed by an engineer, but was at least an attempt after the second flooding. the second flooding of my neighbor's property and the town road, which had to be closed, which was discussed at the selectmen's meeting. That's because of a change to the existing property that never came before anyone, that never had anyone have a chance to comment. Also, when we're talking about permitted uses, to the current existing operations, is a screening plant allowed an industrial without a gravel removal permit? Is material coming and going from the site to be screened and then being sold off-site allowed on the current zoning without a earth remove permit? My understanding is there is no earth removal permit for the property.
My understanding is it's not required because they're not taking the material from the ground there.
There is a stockpile? Is that not part of earth removal, as I've read the regulations? That's, those are the questions, and that can be for the selectmen, because they oversee the earth removal. I understand that. But I bring that up because I understand, is the screening plant going to continue to operate? Because that is part of the noise and the dust. So, I have many questions that I'll get into that deal with the proposal tonight, and I believe they will probably be more than we can answer tonight. So, I'm willing to email these after this meeting, so that they will be on record and the engineer can start going through them. But I'll start by saying, I've lived across the street from this industrial zone for at least 22 years, directly across, down the street with other existing industrial facilities that are properly sized. I've never had a problem. I've never had a complaint. I cannot say that about the current operation, nor this proposal. It is oversized for the three-acre lot. Section 6.7.1.1 of your zoning bylaws states that the purpose of this review tonight is, quote, "protection of adjacent areas against detrimental or offensive uses on the site by provision of adequate surface water drainage, buffers against light, sight, sound, dust, and vibration, and preservation of light and air," end quote. Again, the current use has not met any of those protections. And I will remind you that this three-acre industrial property is bounded three sides out of four by residential zones. While everyone understands the right to use this property within its current zoning, the proposal is putting too much onto a small industrial property. I also recommend that the planning board obtain the services of a peer review. While the town planner has also found some of the same comments I found, the numerous comments I have as a private citizen have found, indicate the need for a professional review by the town for the protection of the townspeople. My comments are, again, hours of operation. The website currently says it operates 24/7. And that is consistent with what we have seen, weekends, nights. Again, as talked about, a car hauler that was there that would leave at 4:00 a.m., waking neighbors up. Parking. What businesses are in these 12 bays? What are they? Because we need to know that to get an accurate calculation of the number of spaces required. The current calculation on the plans is there will be only one employee per business in the new building, for a total of, I guess, 22 plus what's there. Now, we discussed how there shouldn't be any employee parking there tonight, based on what happens, but that is not reality. Just today, I counted 11 passenger vehicles, plus four tractor trailers, plus one tree truck. And that's not including the unregistered vehicles, many of which were removed over the last 24 hours. All of this, as far as minimum parking required by this board, as part of this site plan review, will affect the lot coverage. And that's the big thing that needs to be looked at here. Not exceeding an acceptable lot coverage. It's a three-acre lot. We must be very careful in looking at what is calculated for the lot coverage. So, if there are more parking spaces required, that is very quickly going to run up the percentage. Paved parking and driveways. So, it was discussed tonight. The zoning regulations point to the subdivision regulations, which refer only to asphalt. So, there seems, I guess, tonight I heard that a waiver is being requested to use gravel. Well, I could tell you, the gravel parking is second class. Why are we allowing that? If this is a first-class operation that we want in the town, that is good for the neighborhood, then we want it to look right. We want it to be paved. I would ask that the board does not accept, allow a waiver from that requirement. The lot coverage calculations, I would like to see what those are. Fifty-five percent is what's claimed on the plans. But it seems to include the drainage basins and swales, as well as a permanent easement that is not shown on the plans for Verizon. All of this, which Section 5.2.2.1 prohibits, including in the lot coverage. I estimate approximately at least 80% lot coverage under the proposal. And I'm just, sorry, I don't have a big point. I got a little point.
Okay, there you go.
That's a product. The orange in that indicates what would be included in lot coverage, parking lots, driveways, buildings. The yellow indicates what can be included as non-lot coverage. I'm just guessing, but that's nowhere near 55%. Again, because you cannot, per Section 5.2.2.1, include swales, which we discussed tonight, drainage basins, which we discussed tonight. And that includes to the top of the basins, not just the bottom. Why is that? Because in our town, we want to not put major things on small lots. So, if you need drainage to get approval, then you can't include it in your lot coverage. The fire department comments were glossed over. Well, those indicate also, which was not mentioned, that additional paved area is required for, quote, "restricted fire department use." That means they need somewhere to come in to put a fire out that isn't, doesn't have cars, vehicles, construction equipment sitting in. That will add to the lot coverage. Where will the dumpster and associated paving for that be located? That is not shown in the plans. That will affect the lot coverage. Again, the Verizon easement is not shown in the plans. That, per regulations, affects lot coverage. Now, we talk about trees. Based on what I see in the plans, although not referenced as required, trees, more trees are being removed, a few trees left, which includes a large, I'd say, over 24-inch oak tree, along with others. That's inside the town right-of-way, by the way, in order to make this proposal work. I will remind you, Crooked Lane was designated a scenic byway over 20 years ago, which comes with associated permitting requirements, specifically to tree removal and tree planting. I would refer you to wherever those bylaws are. Section 6.5.1 says a maximum of three entrances for a corner lot. The plan I had seen shows four. I guess tonight's plan shows three. But again, I'll go back to Crooked Lane. The width of Crooked Lane is less than the required width of the driveways. And as discussed, therefore, when trucks come in and out, as they do today, because they're using non, as far as I know, permitted driveway openings onto Crooked Lane, they're crossing the road. There is a site distance problem from Rhode Island Road. As discussed, I would recommend that a site distance study be done, along with traffic study. The drainage, well, it used to, as I referenced, go through an old railroad bed to the east. That was filled in, so it can no longer do that. This proposal has several things that I'll comment on. This is number one. Simply, there are drainage pipes shown on the southern edge of the property with manholes. I question whether they can be installed so close to the property line. And not just installed, but maintained in the future. So, in their current location, is there reason required from the adjacent property in order to install and maintain them permanently? Let's see, I'll staple something. Catch Basin 1 on the plan has a rim elevation of 93.8 along the eastern side of Crooked Lane to collect drainage from Crooked Lane, because that's been cut off by the proposal. That basin flows into the top of a, that catch basin flows on the top into a drainage infiltration or detention pond. The top of that pond is elevation 95. I haven't seen the drainage calculations. Have there been drainage calculations submitted? I would like to see those. If the calculations, I'm guessing, maybe allow for a foot of freeboard, i.e. pond fills up to within a foot of the top under its worst condition, then the design may be allowing the basin to fill to 94. Well, if the catch basin is at 93.8, which is on the road, and the detention pond fills higher, that means it goes back out into the road, up through the catch basin, and again floods the road under the current proposal. The emergency overflow of said base detention pond is overflowing directly into Crooked Lane. So, in the case of a plugged outlet or other failure, which happens, the town street and the neighbor's property will be impacted again. A emergency overflow should be provided that directs the water away from the street. The dike of this same detention pond utilizes town right-of-way to, quote, "fit it in." The town property should not be used, and I can point that out. This dark line here is the town right-of-way. The town right-of-way is the back of the dike. The dike extends along with the slope down to the roadway.
Does it note?
Yes, thank you. The town property should not be used in order to fit the drainage proposed to meet the requirements of this size of a proposal. Again, any changes to do that will affect lot coverage calculation. What assurance do we have that the drainage will be installed, as we've discussed? And whereas it hasn't been installed per planning board requirements on other properties in the neighborhood to date, we need assurances that it will be done, whatever the final plan is. And then finally, I'll end with multiple comments that have not been part of the submittal, per the list in the zoning regulations. Item two on the list of the regulations, these will be right from the list, structures within 200-foot of property lines have not been shown. I believe the planner noted that. Trees to be removed, number eight on the list, have not been shown. Number nine, loading and unloading facilities have not been shown. Number 10, provisions for refuse removal have not been shown. Number 11, drainage calculations, I guess they've been provided. Number 12, and this gets back to the discussion we were having about how many vehicles come and go, that's actually a requirement to come to this meeting tonight. Projected traffic volumes. And I would recommend a full traffic study to understand what is going on, again, with what are the proposed businesses? Because right now, we don't know what the proposed businesses in the bays will be. And if they are simply going by all industrial uses that are permitted, as the zoning enforcement officers have stated, can go on there now, then I would expect the worst-case traffic volumes be used in industrial. Number 16, proposed and existing locations assigned. There are no signs shown. There is an existing sign that's not shown. I'm not sure if a permit was taken out for that existing sign. Engineered plans of building, which are signed by an architect. That's number 17 in your list of requirements. And number 18, all existing and proposed information, again, not showing signs, and proposed signage. I would also ask, since there is a waterline connection with new use for the water, has a request application gone to the Board of Selectmen for water usage, which I believe is required because it is said it's taunting water, and there's a certain allocation that has to be voted on by the selectman? Those are my comments.
Thank you.
I can email them?
Please email them.
I suggest professional review, peer review, based on the fact that that's looking at my iPhone to find these things.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I just want to let you know that we were made aware that you were expecting revised plans, so, which we did not receive before tonight. So, we haven't had a chance to review revised plans yet. So...
And again, I would ask, when will those revised, as Mr. Murray asked, when will those revised plans available?
Well, I believe they were bringing them in today, and that's why they presented the plans.
Okay. Again, if it's going to be up to the public to review plans, then I would request a sufficient amount of time to be able to do that. And that includes all the things that weren't included in the current set.
Right, exactly. That's why I think we did mention that we would continue.
Anyone else? On that note, make a motion to continue the site plan review for 156 Rhode Island Road until May 12th at 7:00 p.m.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. As, site plan review will be continued until May 12th. Bob, it sounds like you got your work cut out for you. Come back with a lot of information.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, everybody, for attending tonight. It's nice to see people at a meeting, finally.
Yeah.
Yeah. I had one other item on the agenda that I glossed over when I was trying to make up some time earlier. I just gotta... I had, item number eight on the agenda was to discuss and appoint a planning board member to the Community Preservation Committee. Since I asked that to be on the agenda, I did receive an email from the town administrator citing that there would be a meeting on, I believe, May 23rd. Can you verify that, Mark?
That's correct.
Has that meeting been posted, and do we know who will be present at that meeting?
No, it hasn't been posted. It's later in May. And it was, I believe that's the Board of Selectmen's meeting, at which time they'll discuss accepting applications for, by citizens, in order to express their interest in sitting on the, on the Community Preservation Act committee. Because the Board of Selectmen will appoint, by, according to the bylaw, they appoint three members, and if there's a vacancy or of any other... three members, and if there's a vacancy or of any other board, they have the ability to appoint that one as well. And since we don't have a housing authority, they have the right to appoint that fourth seat on the committee, so that's the purpose of that, and after which time they will review and then...
And just as a clarification, the remaining positions outside of those four that would be appointed would be board or committee members from, from planning board, conservation commission, board of selectmen.
No.
Open space.
Open space.
Historic.
Historical.
And...
Parks.
Parks. That's correct. That is the five.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, if I may, the board, select board is making all those appointments. It's not individual boards recommending someone from their board?
The five boards, we do appoint.
We will appoint a member of this board to be on the CPC.
And, and why, again, I'm just asking the question, why the delay in doing that? We have to wait for this May meeting in order to do that?
No, we don't. The planning board, each board does not have to wait until any particular time. I mean, the selectmen have been involved with town meeting and budgets and so on and so forth, so they've scheduled it for their next, they discussed it at the past meeting, they'll entertain applications after that. And then the way the bylaw is written is that then the committee would put together a plan as far as how to operate, as far as the resources in the community, whether it's housing, you know, the needs, historic needs and other things, and then put together a process in the application. And then they, the committee really is, is meant to be a review committee. In other words, once all the applications come in from various boards or citizens groups, then they get, they will review all those and based on the submittals, they will make recommendations to which, which, which projects may get funded. And then those get submitted through the normal town meeting process, at which time they would go to the annual town meeting.
Right. And again, just my personal opinion, we don't have to wait till July when the funds start occurring, and we should be appointing that board sooner than later to get that groundwork started. Just my personal opinion, for what it's worth.
Yeah, I don't think there's any harm in it for an individual board to do that. I think there's some concern that if the five boards do appoint five members, that there would be a quorum and they could act prior to the May 23rd meeting. But, you know, I guess there's a lot of moving parts to that happen. Either way, I think, oh, so let me put it this way. Does any planning board member have interest in being that CP?
I think it should be Michelle. She's invested a lot into this already and knows a great deal about it.
Yeah, I think she's passionate about it. I think that she would be the planning board representative for that anyhow, so. That said, if nobody else has a problem with it, I would move to have Michelle appointed as the CPA representative.
Just CPC.
To the CPC.
Second.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. One last thing to do in May, see?
Mark, can you make sure that we get, if that's in person or whatever? I guess if it's a Zoom meeting, that we get the link, because I think we'd all want to still attend.
Sure.
Just to have a little bit of input. But, you know, just, I don't think we're doing this to usurp the process as much as just, she's the heir apparent.
Okay.
And that's what would happen anyway.
Right, okay.
Does anybody else have anything else they'd like to talk about tonight? I think we've exhausted the agenda for this evening.
You said that you're gonna use outside peer review for that project that we just saw?
That's correct.
Well, it should.
But, like, do you have a company that you know of right now, or are you still, like...
Well, currently, the town has been using environmental partners for most of their engineering work, so I would just, at this point, just continue on with submitting it to them.
No, that's fine. Did they tell you to call Scott, or did they say a different...
Yeah, I have, yeah, Scott Turner is, yes, yeah.
Yeah, he worked with us on the hospital project and has done a few other small things for us. He's been good to work with.
Yeah, I've spoken to him on a couple of the items as well in the past, so.
Yeah, he's had to a lot of meetings. I talked for a lot of nights. All right, that said, I make a motion to adjourn. Before I do that, just to make sure I properly announced it, our next meeting is May 12th at 7:00 p.m. And that said, motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.